The October 11th Committee of the Whole Meeting is called to order. If you'll please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here by phone.
Alderwan Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chair, a quorum is present.
The Chair will entertain a motion to allow Alderman McMiniman pursuant to the statute and the rules of the City Council to participate via electronic means, meaning telephone.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Tuesday, September 27, 2022 Committee Minutes. Motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Treasurers report. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Chair Donlin. The corporate fund in the month of September had a beginning balance of $65,504,140. We took in total receipts of $19,629,816. We had total disbursements in the month of September of $29,643,499, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $55,490,457. Of that ending balance, Chair Donlin, your ARPA fund balance is $25,217,588 at this time. That concludes my report, Chair Donlin.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted.
Move. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Office of Budget and Management Contract Report. You all received that report literally minutes ago. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to take a look at it yet. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we can always talk about it next week, I'm sure, right, Mayor?
Chair Donlin.
Yes, ma'am.
I did have to check on the rest.
Okay. So why don't we, if you all take a look at that, and we can discuss it next week if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Presentations. We have one presentation this evening. I was contacted by Pillsbury Group, and they're going to give a presentation. I really appreciate the opportunity to hear what's going on. I heard a lot of good things. Floor is yours. You'll introduce yourself. That would be wonderful.
Sure. Sure. I'm sure most in the room know. I'm Chris Richmond, President of Moving Pillsbury Forward. We formed about three years ago as a working group, morphed into a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. I want to help introduce the rest of my boards with me here tonight. Got Holly Poskin here to my right, and to my left, I've got Tony Del Giorno. We represent the board to Moving Pillsbury Forward. And I want to show a video that we had Storyteller Studio produce for us over the summer that explains the project in detail. It's about six minutes long, and then we'll be glad to give a little more detail about the project, or take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond.
Thanks. It's a bit painful to just see it deteriorate and crumble into disarray. This is a project that needs to happen, and right now, the biggest benefit to the community is getting rid of this blight.
It really represents the despair that people feel when they don't feel they have any hope.
We're at the former Pillsbury Mills here in Springfield, at 1525 East Phillips Avenue. Pillsbury was constructed from 1920 to 1929 as, at the time, the largest flour mill in North America. And by post-World War II era, we had almost 1,500 employees here working on not just flour milling, but packaged goods for Pillsbury. At some point in the late '60s, it started to contract just a little bit. Till 1991, when it sold to Card Gill. Card Gill then ran the plant for another 10 years. And then unfortunately, in 2008, they made the corporate decision to simply sell it for scrap. And unfortunately, the scrap operators, they realized that the metal from the site, the only way to get at it was to remove the asbestos, which unfortunately, they did in an illegal fashion. It created a mess, a legal mess for them, and a mess for the community. When the dust finally settled, Moving Pillsbury Forward formed as a not-for-profit that has taken control of the property, and we're preparing to demolish the structures that are on-site, clear the site for redevelopment, and put it back into production for the community. With these types of sites, it's the fear of the unknown. And so a lot of what I do is address that. A lot of the things that we tested for were not present, which is really a good thing. And so now, we do have that data. We can really talk to people and say, hey, you know, it's not as bad as it appears, and what is here is very manageable. We've done water testing at the site, groundwater testing. We've done soil cores all throughout the site, and we've looked at all of the structures to see what level of asbestos, or lead paint, or other contaminants may exist. There's always standards that we're impairing to. Here, I would say we're on the low to modest side relative to what we found, and we also haven't found a lot of different types of contaminants, so that makes it less complex. The work is straightforward, but there's a scale. Pillsbury facility is huge. We have approximately 20 buildings, 585,000 square feet of built space. Six of the buildings that we have on-site are under partial demolition already. Those are our highest priority buildings to get down, just from a safety standpoint. It's one of the largest brownfield sites in central Illinois. There are 12,000 people that live within one mile of the site. Our intention is to clean it up, to demolish the structures that are on-site, and get it back into production for the community.
Northside Springfield is a very strong community, so it really breaks my heart now to see what has happened with Pillsbury. You know, people here are struggling. There's a lot of crime that's creeping into the neighborhood.
One broken window always creates another one, and so I think just getting rid of this will provide some neighborhood stabilization, and then allow it to start rising back up.
It's still a great community. There are still great people who live here. We just want to make sure that they have a safe place to live, that is free of environmental concerns and environmental hazards.
All told, this is estimated to be a $10 to $12 million project to clear the structures from the 18-acre site such that it can be redeveloped. We're really aiming at a three-to-five-year timeframe here, and we're determined to see this through.
Everybody has a different vision for what can happen here, but I think that's okay. I think that's great, because it really gives us kind of a blank canvas that we can build whatever it is that we want to build. I think that what we do here can be something that people all across the country can come and talk about. This is not unique. This type of situation is occurring all across the country. So my hope is, is that we will build something here so fantastic that other cities will say, wow, how did you do that? And we want to do it too.
Moving Pillsbury Forward needs those in the community to stand with us, to help regenerate this part of the community that once was an economic juggernaut. We need folks to get involved and consider donating. We know it's going to take a financial stack that includes state and federal resources, but we also know that we need local resources to get many of the things done here that need to be done. We're working diligently to do that, as I stand here today, and we'll continue to do
So with that, the reasons for coming tonight was to thank the City of Springfield and the Council for supporting the work of the Phase Two with the amount of money that you voted on around the horseshoe here just a few months ago to help move this project forward. It continues to move forward, and the results of the Phase Two are now in, and we've scheduled a public meeting for tomorrow night at Wallace Elementary School, 7:00 PM. That's over at 2120 East Reservoir Street. It's the next in our series of Moving Pillsbury Forward public meetings. Previous meetings have been held at Landfair High School, and as many of us are aware, Landfair High School is not really available right now due to major renovation, major investment by District 186. Landscape of the area around Pillsbury, the Landfair High School, Memorial Stadium, Lucky Horseshoes Baseball, and the railroad relocation, the railroad 10th Street corridor, all of those things going on right in the Pillsbury neighborhood around Pillsbury makes this the right time and the right place for us to put in a community investment in redeveloping this site and this community development project. So again, I'm kind of hoping everyone joins us and understands what we're trying to accomplish here. So with that, any questions you may have around the horseshoe? Otherwise, we hope to see you tomorrow night at our meeting so we can discuss the Phase Two data results.
Alderman Williams.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for keeping these public meetings within the Pillsbury community. You know, it's in Grandview, but it's because Landfair wasn't available, and the people that live around Wallace are a part of the Pillsbury community over there. It's just on the 19th Street side, so I still feel like we're connected and they don't have far to go. I just have one question of you tonight. So when I was reading, well, actually, two. The first one is with arsenic. So it was common to use arsenic because it was a mill, and the sweets and the flour, and so the rats and roe, you know, all that kind of stuff. But they spread it, that arsenic, and in the study, when they addressed it, it would have to be abated or, you know, taken up. But is it like a thin layer of it all over, or is it really deep?
Right. So in the Phase Two, we did 70 soil cores throughout the 18-acre site. Our engineer will be on hand tomorrow night to explain it in more depth. But you're exactly right. Arsenic's a naturally occurring element in Illinois at a certain background level. At the Pillsbury site, the soil core samples revealed that it's about twice of normal background, which tells us that historically, there were likely pesticides used there, and just as likely, all the railroad tracks with the railroad ties that had creosote in them, those typically were treated with arsenic, not unlike a lot of decking materials and things like that with pressure-treated lumber up until just about 20 years ago. So the site does have some elevated levels of arsenic that'll have to get dealt with in the soil at some point in the later stages of the redevelopment of the site. We pretty well got the project broken down at this point into demolition of the buildings, the occupied structures, demolition of the silos and headhouse, and then dealing with the soil preparation so that it can be redeveloped. So those are the three sort of major stages. And of course, the front end of that is the buildings to be dealt with, because quite honestly, they're the largest public safety hazard, the immediate public safety hazard.
Thank you. Alderman Redpath.
This is a major undertaking. I appreciate you doing that. It's, I know how rough it's been on you guys for these past few years. The State has said that they're going to put an overpass there at the railroad tracks at 15th and North Grand. Are they going to incorporate any of the land that Pillsbury has right now?
They are just a small portion of the north tip of the Pillsbury property that's now held within the not-for-profit. We have been in contact with Hanson Engineers in regards to that, and-
Does that help you at all, or it doesn't get to the buildings that you need to have demolished?
It is really such a small portion of the northern tip that it's almost inconsequential to the project.
Have you gotten any commitments from the State or the federal government for any kind of funding for this?
We haven't 100% secured commitments from either the State or the federal government yet, although I will say, in April, we applied for a congressionally-directed request, often known as earmark, through the two Senate offices. Senator Durbin's office advanced our request all the way through the Appropriations Committee in late July, early August, and it's awaiting the federal budget process right now. We anticipate knowing by the end of this congressional session, which should end at the end of December. So that's $2 million. It's in the pipeline.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Richmond weighs here. One else?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Richmond, if you could, one more time, tell us when the hearing is tomorrow night, so we can make sure those out there can hear and hopefully come.
All right. Sure. So tomorrow night at Wallace Elementary School. That's at 2120 East Reservoir Street in Grandview, near Pillsbury and the Pillsbury neighborhood, not as near as we could get. So appreciate everybody's time tonight, and hope to see a lot of folks out tomorrow night.
Thank you for your work, and thank you for the update. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Tom.
Okay. No other presentations were scheduled?
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Seven o'clock, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, okay.
Doors open at 6:30, 7:00 PM. Program lasts about an hour.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. There are no other presentations that I'm aware of, so we'll move right along. Ordinances tabled are remaining in committee. Agenda items 2022, 256. Agenda items 22, 2022, 384. Anybody desire to act upon either one of those? Alderman Redpath.
I plan to talk to the veterans groups this week, and I've been waiting for a consultation with the groups to try to come to a resolution, but it's not coming to fruition. If I don't get some movement on this within the next 30 days, I'm going to pull this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Anyone else? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, ordinances for committee consideration. CWLP.
2022, 425. An ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Quanta Technology LLC in an amount not to exceed $44,000 to provide consulting services and study support for NERC compliance for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2022, 426. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of Cisco SmartNet Support Maintenance for the core infrastructure equipment from Procedo Networked Solutions from LLC as state contract in an amount not to exceed $63,936.36 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Public Works. 2022, 427. A supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $3,150,000 may be used for construction services for construction of Stanford Avenue Extension Project from 11th Street to Fox Bridge Road, MFT Section 15-00467-02-PV for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We had a present?
2022, 428. An ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for the construction of the Stanford Avenue Extension Project from 11th Street to Fox Bridge Road, MFT Section Number 15-00467-02-PV for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Present.
The ayes have it. We have one present. Alderwoman Purchase.
2022, 429. An ordinance approving the final plan of Pegasus Landing Minor Subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2022, 430. An ordinance vacating a portion of Ennis Avenue between 9th Street and 10th Street, and a portion of Miller Street between 9th Street and 10th Street, and the alley lying east of Lot 13 in Wells and Peck's addition to WRS Legacy LLC.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2022, 431. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of four vacant or abandoned properties on the tax sales list from Sangamon County as trustee in an amount not to exceed $3,180 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2022, 432. An ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR0091923 Phillips Street in the amount of $28,875 relating to the usable segment 6B of the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2022, 433. An ordinance authorizing relocation expenses for the acquisition of property occupying parcel SR00951004 East Ennis Avenue in the amount of $10,500 relating to the usable segment 6B of the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent. Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
General City Business. 2022, 434. An ordinance authorizing decrease in number of Class D local licenses by one due to closure of business by Keefner's Incorporated, doing business as Keefner's located in 1914 West Isles Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Is there a present vote on that, Mr. Clerk? Present from number four. Alderman? Mr. Fulgenzie, present. Present. Noted. Thank you. Thank you.
2022, 435. An ordinance amending the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding Chapter 32, Section 32.56.1 through 32.56.7, and amending Chapter 33, Section 33.802-G pertaining to land and bank.
Or motion?
Motion to hold.
Second.
There's a motion to hold. Is there a second? Yes.
Chuck gave it to you.
Motion to hold for a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Williams. I'm sorry. Alderman Hanauer pushed his button first. Alderman.
I'm quick tonight.
Yeah, you are.
The reason why I want to hold this is I was talking to Colin Cisco.
Thank you.
Thank you.
West from above.
I was speaking to Colin Cisco about this. They've dealt with a lot of land banks, and I need more information on it, and what, I guess more than anything, what we're trying to achieve. I'm concerned, because we have taken a lot of property since we've all been on council. We take them off the tax rolls, and we don't seem to, it seems like we're not selling them very quick, and I want to know more about what we're trying to do and how this works with the way other cities do it. I just don't have that information. So I'm just asking that we hold. That way, I can learn, kind of learn more about it. But I am concerned about the number of properties that we have off the tax rolls, and, you know, moving forward with this, you know, I don't think we should be in the real estate business, quite honestly. That's just my own personal, my own opinion. I don't think that, that's not what the city's meant to do, and I just, I think that if someone else, if a not-for-profit or something would want to get into a land bank, that's another story, but I don't think that it's something that the city should get into as far as real estate. And it seems like we get more and more, and all we're doing is we're taking tax money away from our own selves, and from the school district, and from everyone else. So that's my concern. So I ask that we hold this.
Anybody want to respond to that? If not, we'll just go along with... Mr. Circle? Mayor?
Can I explain?
Well, yes, just very briefly without, this is, was actually in part from the, it's been discussed, I think, for a couple of years, but from the very first Harvard-Bloomberg recommendations regarding kind of putting an organizational structure. I think it's been discussed here a couple of times. This just sets a framework, a little more formal framework for the process. It requires a regular report to the council. It sets up really kind of an organizing mechanism relating to the properties the city does own. And the issue about taking properties off the tax roll, the minute the tax trustee gets control, they're off the tax roll. So the city's role in that is very limited relative to the properties primarily that the city, I think, has acquired have been through the tax sales. So if the city acquires those, it would be tax-exempt until they're sold. If the tax trustee gets them, they're tax-exempt until they're sold. And so the intent of this was simply to, the council had asked about, you know, what's the process, or what are we doing? And this was just meant to give a little bit of a structure to the process. It requires a regular report. It requires the, you may recall, the city has a Housing Policy Council, so it requires them to make recommendations to the mayor and city council on what to do with the lots. So it just sets up a little more structure, because as a practical matter, the city is involved in the lot process, whether, kind of whether we like it or not. An example is, and we talked a little bit about this, but when the tax trustee acquires the properties, the city has to maintain them. So the city's role is intimately involved in these processes, no matter what we do. So the intent of this was simply to set up a little more responsibility and structure to that process. It requires reports. It requires a housing council to make recommendations, and it sets out a little bit more organization, like, for example, maintain a list, publish a list. What's the plan? So all of those responsibilities are then assigned to be reported. So it is just a code provision, just simply trying to set up a structure, if that's of some help.
Y'all hold them in hand. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, I, you know, I took this as something as a way of responding to me complaining about vacant lots and complaining about whether the county had them, or we just demolished them. Then there's nothing there saying, how do we maintain these? And they grow into natural areas, or, you know, they overgrow, and they do things like that. So in all this, I saw this as something that's in the best interest of the city, and that's why I questioned and hit my mic to speak on why are we holding something that's in the best interest of Springfield as far as organizing, taking care of a lot of stuff that we complain about when it comes to lots, you know, and issues with lots. So, but the discussion has helped so far, so thank you.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually have two questions now. First question, and I guess, Mr. Circle, you're probably the one to ask this. The ordinance fact sheet doesn't have anything on financial information?
That's because this is a provision to the city code. It doesn't cost anything. This is just amending the code.
Okay.
It doesn't spend any money. You know, that's a separate, uh, process.
But it sets up, it sets up a, a framework, as you said, for us to spend money.
For their, this basically is assigning responsibilities to do certain things. But this is, again, keep in mind, this is just a code amendment. It's not actually entering a contract or doing anything like that.
So, um, in that kind of, in that, that, that theme, um, how do we usually purchase these properties? Are those generally TIP dollars? I mean, where do the, where do the funds come from for these normally? And do we have, I mean, it, it, I will say, when I've read this ordinance, I, to me, it looked like we were envisioning a more aggressive, um, purchasing policy or, I mean, I, you, you could read it a lot of different ways. So is it just, that's something that the Housing Policy Council will recommend?
Well, yes, this really doesn't, um, it, I'm sorry, it does not, um, attempt to, uh, in any way associate money. You know, it's, this is just kind of a structure. But the ultimately, uh, as you know, the, uh, council votes on each acquisition. So if there's an ordinance to purchase properties, it comes to the city council where it's identified, uh, the spending source. This was really intended, again, to just give some structure to the, uh, basically the responsibilities that the city has in a way that, uh, is somehow accountable and then also makes regular reports and so on. So I'd be happy to, uh, you know, answer questions or if you want time to read through it and so on. This is very similar to some of, some of the other cities. We took, uh, we looked at quite a few others. And there's a combination of ones where, uh, cities kind of have a structure to track it, market it, and do things. They've also have a structure where there can be a not-for-profit, a separate actual land bank, but typically that requires public funding, you know, commitment of public funds to operate it. So this is, uh, was intended to be kind of a first step to give a structure to dealing with basically the vacant lots.
And thank you.
If, if that, if that helps. But this doesn't commit money or, you know, it doesn't approve contracts and things like that.
Oh, and I, I understand that. I just, it, it certainly envisions committing city funds. Um, and then my, my second question is just, um, how often does the Housing Policy Council meet? I, we don't, I haven't heard anything about them really in terms of a report, so.
Um, I think, I'm, I'm trying to see here. I think the city code may require, uh, as needed, but I can check on that. I, I'm not, I'm not certain of the exact schedule.
Okay, thank you. And is that, is that council fully, um, I mean, is, is that full? Do we have people, are there vacancies on it?
I don't know the current status of it. I would have to check on that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
And remember, that also comes to the council, meaning there has to be appointments and approvals and so on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, I'm just, I, this is a, this is an org, this is a board from one of our boards we haven't seen, at least since I've been up here. I don't think I've seen an appointment to it. So I'm just interested in it. I, I would like to, I agree, I think maybe get a little more information about what this, what this will do, how it's envisioned to work, um, and, and maybe just hold it while we get those answers. Um, I, I think it certainly is a good idea to have a more structured focus on how we deal with vacant lots that the city has. Um, we've kind of just taken over an Enos Park land bank, you know, and, and we had that model that we can, we can certainly look at too. But I would agree with holding this for a little bit while we just get a little more details and background and worked out on this.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Donlin. Uh, I, the question on the cost was, that was one of my questions. Did this cost anything? Um, and, and so every property that we own now will go into this land bank, um, once this is approved. Am I understanding that correctly, Corporation Council?
Well, the, the city still owns all the property.
Right.
This is really, um, at least was intended to be kind of a structural
Okay.
process, an organized, organized process on how to deal with the lots. The city would still maintain ownership of the lots.
Okay.
There are, there are some models where there is actually a separate, um, uh, not-for-profit entity, you know, separate from government, where a city or, or, or maybe a, a tax trustee might assign lots to that entity. Typically, what ends up happening is that entity then goes to the public bodies and say, we need a certain amount of tax dollars to operate. So it's, it's, uh, uh, this is a little simpler process. It's almost like, it seems to me is, it, it's kind of like a, a, a first step and maybe you evolve eventually in a one or two or three or four or five years, if it makes sense to do. If it doesn't, then this is just a way to get it organized.
Okay, I understand that point. I, I would just, you know, my, my only other comment would be, I probably would be hesitant of putting it in another not-for-profit's hands considering what we just went through. Um, and, and I would just ask, you know, I know Colin, um, is working on some language and things, some ideas, and I'm always open to those ideas. And I would just ask, how, how long do we anticipate, um, holding this and, and, um, before we get some answers, um, to, to move forward?
Alderman Hanauer, do you care?
Um, I mean, I, I just want, I'm, I want to talk to him. I want to learn more about these land banks. You know, I'm not opposed to this at this time. I just, I, I, what's, what's the, I don't understand what this does that we, we can already do from public work standpoint. Uh, uh, that's, that's the question I have. And, you know, um, so if I had my way, as soon as they came on our roll, we'd, they'd go off a bid immediately. That solves a problem. Get somebody, get, get the neighbors to buy. Get it off, get it off our hands. Let them be responsible for it. Uh, get, you know.
Alderman, to, uh, Mr. Gregory's question though, I mean, it's obviously not your intent to hold this indefinitely. It's to get some language.
No, no, not at all.
All right. Alderman Gregory, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have one more member of the council, and then I'd like to give Mr., uh, Cisco an opportunity to come up as I see him in the audience. Mr. Redpath.
So Corporation Council, I need a little bit more clarification. I was always on the assumption, and maybe you can clear this up, that, that the government body couldn't hold the land bank, that it had to go to a not-for-pro, not-for-profit, and that's the way it had to be. Is that, is that not state statute?
No.
So we have the ability to?
Yeah, the, the land bank is, you could call it, there's no term of art on land bank. You could just simply call it the land rent roll or roll. See what I mean? Because there, it's, we're not creating a bank. I mean, it's, in a way, it's kind of a misnomer. Land bank has usually been used pretty loosely just to say that this is a mechanism for holding property, which we already hold that. What this is really doing is assigning administrative responsibilities to do certain things. And it was, I think, originally in part because of discussion here with the council, with some of the aldermen, asking, well, what are you going to do or how are you going to do it? So this is trying to assign certain responsibilities, like a regular report, maintain a list, you know, market. In other words, it makes, it, it requires certain steps. Uh, again, think of it like any other city code provision, assigning the police department to do a certain thing. That's all this is doing is it's creating a framework.
I'm not opposed to this. I, I, I think that we do need some kind of organization. The amount of properties we have are enormous. And, uh, but I just, I, I yield to the, to the, the alderman, asking to hold and, and so they can get their questions answered.
Anybody else on the council?
Yeah, I got one more thing.
Alderman Hanauer.
The other thing I have, it seems like, and this is just me, I don't know if anybody else has noticed, but it seems like we're dumping a lot of stuff on, on, uh, O-PED. And I'm, I'm concerned that, that they have the staff that this is one more thing to pile on them. And, uh, I'm, I'm just concerned about that, too. We, we're limited in staff down there, too. And, uh, you know, we, we've got a lot of tips that they gotta, gotta manage, a lot of projects that, that they've got to make sure that the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And, and, uh, then we're gonna put this on them as well. And, uh, that's, you know, that at some point, you'll hit the breaking point for, for that, that organization. So, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Cisco, do you wish to come up and address the council on this topic? You could please identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Donlin and the rest of the council. Uh, my name's Colin Cisco. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Capital Area Realtors. Um, so I think if the prerogative for the city is to make a, from what I understand, a registration and a report for the properties that you guys have, uh, acquired, um, I think that is completely different from what this ordinance is written and how it's framed. Um, the way that this ordinance is framed is very similar to a few other municipalities around the state that we've worked with, our association. Um, Peoria, for example, this ordinance and Peoria's ordinance for, for their land bank are very similar. Um, so I mean, if the ci, if the city council, if you guys would like a land bank, um, I think that's something we can talk about, um, you know, when it comes to funding, it comes to, you know, how maintenance and administrative costs will be funded, um, at a review of yearly or quarterly, um, on the land bank and what is going on with the land bank specifically. But I think if it is just a registration and report, then this ordinance is not really what you would want or need because this ordinance, the way it's written, basically sets up a land bank. So, and, you know, a report is a lot different than what a land bank is. So, um, I, I think that that is something that needs to be considered. Um, because, again, this is, if this will create a land bank for the city, that is similar to a lot of other municipalities around the state. So it's just kind of weighing what your prerogatives are.
Alderman Gregory.
So, sorry, I, I don't mean to prolong this, but from, from, from your view, um, what, what is the, the cons? What are the pros and cons to, to, uh, a land bank? Well, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to gather my, how hard is this?
It's not necessarily that there, it's more, uh, about, a land bank can create and it can foster, you know, incentive to revitalize vacant, abandoned and blighted properties. But a land bank is something that's very, you know, it's complex. It requires a lot. So if you want to do it correctly, you're going to need an ordinance that is written well and, and is tailored for the community and is tailored for a land bank. Um, you know, I think that if you get into, there's, there's a few land banks around the state that don't operate as well. Um, but there are others that, you know, go after, it'll go after one property. It will revitalize that property. It will sell that property and then it'll move on to the next one. It won't take on hundreds of properties at once because then you're overwhelming yourself. So I think that that kind of was where the cons come in for a land bank, is just understanding what the city needs, understanding where it needs to target, what part of the city it needs to target, what type of properties it wants to target. So it's really just dependent on how it's written and how you go after the properties that you would like to revitalize.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Donlin.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, so, 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 um, what part of this would you be opposed to or are you not opposed to any, anything in here? That's what I'm trying to understand.
So originally, I thought this ordinance was to create a land bank for the city. And, um, our association is not against land banks. We think, like I said, that they can create, um, you know, they, they can incentivize revitalization of properties that need to be revitalized. Um, but coming into this, you know, our thought was that there was no mention of how it was going to be funded. Um, some land banks are funded through IDA grants or just government grants, um, alone or private donations. So since that, none of that was in this ordinance, that was our concern. It was like, okay, well, how are we going to fund this land bank? Um, another issue from funding is how are you going to maintain it? You know, the properties that the city takes on, if you don't really mention your funding, how are you going to maintain and revitalize these properties while the city owns these properties? Or the land bank owns these properties? Um, another issue is the kind of an audit review. Um, this one specifically does have an audit review yearly. However, it is by the same people who would be maintaining and, you know, controlling the land bank. So, you know, we would like to see an independent review coming in and seeing what, you know, what the land bank has done in the, that last quarter, last six months, last year, whatever, you know, that timeframe you guys would want. Um, and then another issue too that comes with land banks is that, um, some land banks will kind of go outside of the city limits. So some land banks will create a land bank, some cities will create a land bank, and then they'll start like going out to the smaller municipalities around that city where we believe that if, you know, Springfield wants to create a land bank, it should stay in Springfield. So that is kind of our, um, initial, um, concerns with this. And like I said, just currently, the way it's written is that it will create a land bank. So those would be our concerns for this specific ordinance.
Okay, because I, I mean, really, as an alderman trying to, to do better for my community, when I looked at Exhibit A and I looked at purpose, and the purpose says the purpose of the land bank is to use available resources. Great. To facilitate the return of vacant, abandoned and tax delinquent properties to productive use again by combating, therefore combating community deterioration, creating economic development and stabilization of the housing and job market. Who would not want that? Who, who would be against the purpose is what it's saying in here. This is the purpose of it. The other pieces, the finances, I, I just think this is the first step to dealing with our lots and whether they're vacant or abandoned or whatever the situation is. To me, right now, we're just all over the place with lots, city-owned and individually owned, and there's no really good hardcore policies. I think this would be the start of it. I think we would be open to working with you and others on language that deals with all the other stuff, the outside. I'm not even interested in the smaller communities outside and some of the other things that you have brought up. But I do like the fact that this starts addressing some of the biggest problem in Springfield, dealing with city-owned lots and vacant lots and the county and the city as far as a policy about the cost, the maintenance and the whole bit when it comes to lots. Because right now, all we got is ugly neighborhoods. And, and I don't want to have an ugly neighborhood just to keep your organization happy. My job as alderman is to uplift my neighborhood and make it better by dealing with these abandoned, deteriorating lots. So that, that's why I find myself being in opposition, but I think we can work through this if we don't paint this for what it's not. Because it's, just cause the word land bank, like the corporate council said, is being used. Well, well, let's call it something else that that'll make you comfortable. But, but the thing is, we have to start addressing these lots and doing something with it. I feel like it was in response to me over and over going after the department because we haven't been doing a good job with our lots. So I, I appreciate you for coming and I'm willing to work and I, my ears are open to learn from you. You're the expert. But at the same time, I want to see this issue resolved. And at that, I'll leave it to the next speaker, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. Mayor Langfeller.
Yeah, one good thing is everybody's in agreement that this is a good concept. I think everybody around the horseshoe says, uh, more information's needed, greater understanding because, uh, I think if you asked each person around here or in the audience, land bank, they all have their own definition. And, uh, you know, people think Enos Park had a land bank, but in reality, they accumulated property. TSP Hope accumulated property. City Springfield's accumulating property. But you're right, that's exactly what this ordinance is for, is for a land bank. And Peoria was one of the cities we looked at when, uh, we designed it. Um, but it wasn't by happenstance. Actually, Darrell Harris, Katia McMasters and, uh, Said Joshee all went up to Chicago. They had a, a conference there with regards to how do you make use or do community development. Land banks was one of those, uh, concepts. But really, what we're trying to do is formalize our process. And so when we had Enos Park up here, um, you know, everybody would say, we have to do something with the properties. And we hear it all the time. You have to have a plan of action. And we're going through that process, planning right now with downtown and Enos Park. Uh, well, we need to analyze what properties are useful for the medical community in Enos Park specifically, or the business corridors, or housing development, uh, for the workforce housing. So that's one part of the concept. Those properties that aren't useful in that process will be separated out. But this gives us a formation to move along in the process. So whatever information you'd like to give us. Uh, but since that, uh, conference in Chicago, uh, Bloomberg Harvard is, uh, is responsible for Said being here, which we are thankful for two years fellowship, but also it piggybacks on, uh, the work previously done with regards to our, uh, process associated with, uh, properties. But we met with the Center for Community Progress, and they looked at this specific ordinance. And I find it interesting that some work, some don't, because each community's different. And what it comes down to is what's the support that's going to be provided? Because you can't just come up with a concept and put it out there and, "We done it." You know, we don't have to do anything. No, it's a work. And who's involved, all involved in that work? The entire community. That's why we, uh, Center for Community Progress weighed in. They, uh, asked us in detail what we're trying to do, and they thought we are on the right path forward. And exactly, and Alderman Williams didn't even participate in this process, but exactly what he said, they said, "This is a first step to really codifying the direction we're going." So we'd be all open, uh, for, uh, you know, the Realtors to weigh in if they'd like to. We're more than happy to, but it can impede progress. And that's what we see recently is impeding a progress, especially housing development. You know, because we do talk about, a lot about dilapidated properties and housing re, uh, redevelopment, and then we block, we block, uh, ordinances that come forward that can create that progress. So that's what, uh, we're going to move forward towards. And I, I appreciate Alderman Gregory asking the question, well, how long is this going to be on hold for? But we will give a presentation on the whole concept where we're at at this point, um, and moving that direction because hopefully it gives the council members the confidence in moving forward, uh, next week on the ordinance. But we'll, uh, give a presentation and then you can decide, uh, what other information you needed. But hopefully they'll be comfortable enough to provide a vote at that meeting, uh, if at all possible, and move forward in that direction.
Thank you, Mayor.
I might, um, I do want to answer a couple of questions. Um, it is clear to me, just from your comments, that you haven't looked at this or maybe under, had, understand how city government fits together. Um, there are independent audits. You know, we, the city pays a huge amount of money for independent audits that are done every year for every department. That includes this activity. And then second, on the funding, I think you're confusing a little bit where you've got the independent land banks that go out and have to get sources of funds from private or, or public, uh, parties. In this case, because it's city government, funding is already in place through Public Works, through In this case, because it's city government, funding is already in place through Public Works, through OPEAD. Different funding sources are inherently in the budget. You know, I think there's questions every year about how much is for demolitions, for example? How much is available for TIF for, uh, renovation projects, things of that nature? So there are separate funding sources that are existing inherent, you know, in the city's activities. So they would not be spelled out in this because this is not independent of the city. It's part of the city.
Right, but I, I would argue that, you know, if you're going to create something like this that is going to work towards revitalizing, uh, you know, these vacant, uh, abandoned and blighted properties, you should have some sort of budget allocated for this specifically, but it's not in this order. It's not codified in this ordinance, it's just kind of up and in.
It would never be, it would never be in the city code. The city council might appropriate money in the appropriation ordinance if it chose to for that activity. If a department came forward and said, we need X amount for a land bank operation, then it would be in the appropriation or the budget ordinance. It would not be in the city code.
Right, and that also raises concern that every other land bank that around the state or most land banks around the state are a quasi form of the city government. It's not the city running it itself. It is an independent portion of the city government, which is all, which would also be another concern for this as well. So that is kind of where the funding question comes in because, you know, every land bank we've seen isn't run by the city. It is run by, you know, it's, it's its own little, it's its own entity. That is where our funding question fits in.
I understand.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, um, well, uh, and, and Mr. Circle, I, I do think that, you know, it probably would be pertinent in, in our budget to, to break this off and, and have a budget for the land bank if we do something like that. That way we know what, what it costs to, to keep these vacant lots and, and, you know, buildings. You know, we, we're probably going to have to pay if we get a, a house. We're going to have to pay for somebody to go through it to determine, is it viable for, to, to fix? Or are we gonna, or is it more viable to tear it down? You know, sometimes it just does not make sense to try to, try to fix up an old dilapidated house. It costs more than what it would if you just start from scratch. You know, the only caveat to that is if you've got a historic home and, and, you know, it's on the historic rolls, you know, we have to look at that. And even then, sometimes it's, it's just better not to, not to, uh, you know, try to re, rehab it because the cost overweighs, you know, everything else. The other thing, um, my only question is, what does, what does this do that we're not already doing? We have, we, we're supposed to take care of our own property. And Alderman Williams, I agree with you. That, I don't think we do, you know, with all due respect to Public Works, they're buried too. They, we, you know, are we not doing a good job when we have it? You know, as probably as what, uh, someone that owned it would? I don't know, but, you know, I just, my question is, what does this do that we're not already doing? I, I, that's, that's, you know, formalizing, saying we got to take care of the property and we got to put it out for bid and all that. That's already, we've already got that.
Anyone care to address that?
We'll give a presentation next week.
Okay.
Extremely helpful to, uh, get a greater understanding.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderwoman Conley.
Well, and, and I guess Alderman Hanauer kind of asked my question too, Mayor. So, um, for the presentation, I, I don't understand how, you know, reading, even with the new language that's added for the advisory council, I, I guess I, I would just like to make sure that I understand how this changes what we can already be doing. Um, I mean, it's my understanding, the Office of Planning and Economic Development should already be very intimately involved in, in, you know, how do we use these properties? How are we, how are we pushing for development and growth in, in housing stock that supports economic development? I mean, they, I, I guess I kind of was under the impression that's already what that office did. Which is why I was, I wasn't quite sure about this ordinance. So I'm, I'm still not entirely certain how existing offices and exist, and then this existing council, realistically, everything within the purpose of the advisory council, I can't read with my glasses. It, it looks like this is already, this already, we already have the structure for this? So I guess maybe I'm just not quite clear on how we aren't already doing this with our existing resources.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, a couple of items. One is, uh, again, this codifies it in city code. Right now, if you looked in city code, it's my understanding, there's no reference to land bank. So, uh, that's in a, you know, that's one point. The other part is it's landed in the lap of the purchasing director. It's really, uh, migrated from OPEAD to the purchasing director. So this really codifies that part of the process. But again, I think it'd be helpful, uh, with regards to presentation and let the individuals that are really diving into the weeds on it, so to speak, no pun intended, that they speak next week and provide that, uh, that aspect or, you know, their expertise. But the other side of it is, uh, with regards to funding, you don't put it in the structure. This is a, this is a policy change to the city code. So we all know that. And we all know that the funding comes later. So like we did with bone training, you know, we bought five, five houses for redevelopment and got shot down. So, uh, that's that process. That's a totally separate process that we come back for city council and you can weigh in that separately. But this one is just to codify that, yes, we're committed to doing a land bank. And when we talked to, again, the, uh, the community center, the one thing they did like about this is that the city was invested. Because they seen a lot of land banks that don't work, they have the nonprofit and the city pretty much washes their hand of it and leave it in Enos Park's hand or somebody else. They can't manage it to the level that it needs to. So, uh, this is just a start. Could it go to a hybrid? Possibly. But at least you have to start somewhere and possibly move to a hybrid format. And, uh, but the whole key in the, I think, again, going back, I think everybody has their own concept of how do we get to the goal? I think everybody wants the same goal. How do we redevelop these properties in the city of Springfield? So we all have our ideas of how to get there, but you need the structure in place so you can funnel all those ideas to come up with the goal of successful redevelopment of our properties that we currently have. So whether we like it or not, we're in the land bank business. We just are really in the accumulating the property business. And that came before we got into office and it continues on. We're just trying to work through a solution with as many interested parties as possible to make, uh, sure we have success on the end.
Okay, the motion on the table is to hold this, motion in a second to hold it in committee. Are there any other further comments? Some, yes, Alderwoman Purchase.
Just one question. Will you have information to us also by next week when we're doing a presentation, stuff that you want us to review?
I can give that to you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Hopefully, uh, if you do have information, we don't like a surprise attack, so to speak. Uh, we'd rather have it on the forefront. So if you'd like to, uh, go through the presentation with this and talk to us. It seems like you talked to the council members, but it'd be good to, uh, talk to the ones that actually do the work for the city. And that'd be Public Works, it'd be Corporation Council, it'd be Purchasing. And so, uh, and I think that goes to Alderman Williams' point. Otherwise, it looks like it's a special interest move and we don't want that. We know that the realtors, above anybody, has a great interest in increasing property values throughout the city of Springfield. And so we want to make sure that we're working in tandem to make that happen. And I think everybody, you know, has that same goal.
Yeah, we don't like those surprise attacks like we get every, every, every Tuesday. We walk in here and we hand us, hand us our ordinances.
Okay, the motion on the table is for to hold it in committee. There's a second. Yeah, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of holding it in committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
Twenty twenty-two, four thirty-six, a resolution providing public notice of regular meetings of the city council in Springfield, Illinois for the twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, four thirty-seven, an ordinance establishing the holidays for the city of Springfield for the calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
Twenty twenty-two, four thirty-eight, an ordinance accepting lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW twenty-three dash zero six dash four eight with R.L. Valentine Construction Incorporated for building improvements of the senior services of central Illinois in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the office of the mayor.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda, any discussion? Any discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, four thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, ICJIA, grant number nine two three three oh five in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars and two hundred and sixty thousand, three, thirty-three dollars for the funding of the R three planning and grant and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, thirty-three dollars for the office of planning and development.
Motion for consent.
Motion in a second for consent, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, four forty, an ordinance authorizing the amount of two million, two hundred thousand dollars for demolishing some of the buildings and converting some buildings, rehabilitating other buildings and road infrastructure improvements to relate Midwest LLC utilizing the Far East Tax Increment Fund, Finance Funds for the Popular Place redevelopment project for the office of planning and economic development.
Move for debate. Second.
A motion in a second for debate, any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer, then Williams.
Couple, couple of questions on this, uh, you've got down in the, I'm, I'm pulling it up. You've got down in the, uh, financial area where I think it's like a million dollars. Uh, it's coming out of TIF or something. But that's all they talk about. It's a, it's a two point two million. Where's the, we don't have anything in the ordinance where, where the rest of it's coming from. That's the first, first aspect. I would like to see we get that, where the other parts coming from.
Does someone here from economic development can address that question, please?
Hi, yes, good evening, council members.
Evening.
Yes, uh, so I believe in two thousand nineteen, this body had approved, uh, the one point two million dollars for this particular aspect of this project that the city would, um, you know, come in to do the infrastructure work, uh, that was related to this project. So the one point two has been, um, accepted by this body. However, it has not been expended. Um, so that is why the ordinance reads as it does for two point two million. Um, that includes the infrastructure related costs, uh, that the city would, uh, be responsible for in the amount of one point two million. And the one million dollar is the request for the actual Popular Place project.
Alderman Hanauer.
Follow up on that, um, the one point two that we did, what, I thought, wasn't that for roadwork or something? And that wasn't done?
The, the ordinance provides in section two, uh, it's on the second page. It all refers to the two point two million, all coming from, uh, TIF. One point two million of that is dedicated for roads. One million is, there, there was a gap, the, the total cost and the project scope changed. I believe the total expenditure is around thirty-six million.
Yeah, thirty-eight million.
Thirty-eight million. There was a gap of about approximately five or six million. The city agreed to do an additional, uh, one million with, uh, IDA. IDA and the developer came up with the other five million. So that, that's the reason for the additional one million. The one point two was originally discussed and that's limited to roads. Total amount is two point two million.
But don't we have to do, since it, that was in two thousand nineteen, you said?
Yes, sir.
Do we not have to bring that back? So that was elapsed in two thousand nineteen?
It's included in this ordinance.
It's included.
It is in, it is included?
Yeah, if you look at section one and section two of the ordinance.
That's not what it says.
All right. The, the, um, the other thing that concerns me, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, and and, and I, I think it's great if we can get this, this, you know, going and, but is this the same, the same management company that's been there for quite a while and hasn't done a dang thing for, to Popular Place? Or did we just get a new management company out of, you know, recently? Because my concern is, okay, we do this, right? They didn't do anything to upkeep the buildings now, so we're going to pump thirty million or whatever and I'm sure they're going to come back and want more money from us and all that. What are they gonna, what's their plan to keep it up? Because if we're just throwing money to get it up and then they don't have a plan to keep it going, I, I think that, that all that's going to happen is it's going to go back into ill repair and, and, you know, it won't be our council that has to deal with it, but it'll be down the road, you know? What, what makes us believe that the, the, the management company that's, that's managing it now is, is going to do a better job once, once we've, we've given them money to fix it up? I, I guess is the question, so.
Mayor.
Yeah, a couple of items. One, uh, related, uh, they're the owners and they did Madison Park Place. So this was kind of the ancillary gift they were given to take care of. And they'd be the first to tell you that hadn't been kept up like it should. You know, they're losing dollars. I think, uh, with regards to this, the housing authority is going to be the maintenance and the oversight body here on out, once the projects, uh, redevelop. So they'll be the managing company, uh, related, or, you know, the structure thereof would be a, uh, tax based entity that owns it, but it'd be overseen by, uh, S H A. And they'll be here next week. So I'm glad you put it on debate because, uh, they'll be able to, uh, provide a, uh, a presentation, if you like. They gave it previously, but they can give an update, uh, with regards to how it's progressed to this point and then answer any questions.
Anything else, Alderman Hanauer? Alderman Williams.
Yes, I, you know, uh, this has been a long time coming for that community. I mean, we, we go on and on and on and then we play these delays, 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 I don't understand. Uh, but I'm glad we got the two point two explained. I thought that was always understood that one point two was for roads. The million was for the gap. Then we dealt with, uh, the ECD, you know, they delayed. Um, a meeting happened and then I got a nine oh vote, you know, that's coming to us. Yeah, unanimous. Uh, but these delays, I think are, um, you know, they're starting to frustrate me a little bit because I'm like, this, to me, we have discussed, they have presentation, been to several different meetings about this that I don't understand why it's not on consent. Again, when we say we want to debate something, I, I, we don't never say what it is we're debating. It's just the next week, then we vote for it, you know? So, um, of course, I'm going to live with it. I don't have a choice, you know, if you guys put it on debate. But I hope, I would hope, we're not just putting it on debate just to be putting it on debate, that you legitimately have some debate that you want to do next week. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, um, and Mr. Circle, maybe you can explain this. I, I, I see in the, the whereas section of the ordinance where it's the one point two million for the road infrastructure improvements. I, I guess I'm unclear, I thought those were public streets. Is there a reason why our Public Works office wouldn't be managing those funds?
I'm not sure if I, um, exactly understand the, the very.
Yeah, because, yeah, because the overall ordinance says it will be giving two point two million to the, to the, to the, um, Midwest related. Why are we not fixing the roads ourselves?
Of the two point two, one point two million will go back to Public Works to do that.
That's, but that's not what it says.
Well, um, I'd be happy to talk about the detail of it, but the, what I was simply going to say is there's been a large dispute on the issue of the roads because historically, uh, the city's position was that it was a private roads. That was from the very get-go, you may recall, and, uh, there's been a huge amount of discussion over the years about this, uh, issue with related. And the city, uh, had taken them to court. There was an agreed order. Part of that order was that part of the redevelopment, um, was that they would supply through the project, one point two million. And then ultimately, when the roads were brought up to speed, the city would then take jurisdiction. So that is included in this process. They're funding the difference, uh, through the state, through private equity and so on of the other thirty-six million. So the city's portion of the thirty-eight million is two point two million, of which one point two million is dedicated for repair of the roads.
Okay, so, so I guess, just to be clear, we're going to give one point two million in TIF funds to the organization that was told in a court order that they were responsible for the roads?
They, they disputed that.
How was that settled?
And we reached an agreement with them, uh, going forward that if they would redevelop, then the city would basically take the roads over and fund reconditioning the roads. But they had to fund. they had to fund the rest of the project.
Okay, okay, and then, just.
And part of the reason for the delay, and I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds and apologize for this, Mayor, but what ended up happening was, IDA threw a real curveball because they claimed there was a lockout period where they could not provide funding until there was a, a period where the tax-exempt status of the bonds had to expire, that caused a three or four-year delay, we, they, they didn't find out, and the city didn't find out about that until after the 9% tax credits were awarded, then IDA reversed itself and took back the net, the tax credits.
That actually does help, thank you.
Mayor.
So, and then just real quickly, because we've done this with other projects, is this a situation where the, the company will front the funds, and then we reimburse, and will reimburse them on, after the fact?
Yes.
Okay.
And the work, for example, the work done with, with Public Works, we will end up, the Public Works Department will end up controlling all aspects of that, the bidding of it, you know, all the work, et cetera, and you may recall that there's been other instances where TIF has reimbursed, for example, Public Works for certain projects, or the utility for certain projects, you know, for their, but they do the work and make sure everything is done properly.
So it'll be another situation like that, where the work will be done, and then we'll pay them, and then they'll reimburse us the 1.2 million from the TIF funds?
Yes, it becomes a, an expense, and they're paying for the road, the extra million was because of the shortfall, but they're paying all the rest.
Okay, thank you very much.
You know, through other, through other mechanisms.
Yeah, and I just needed that, thank you, I, I explained, I, I needed that little explanation, thank you.
And of course, the city wouldn't take over the roads until they meet the specifications. Mayor, did you have something you wanted to add as well? Okay, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Donlin, I, I, I totally support this project, of course, and, and I think it's important enough, and it has been such an eyesore in our community to be at this point, that is, that is worth, you know, you know, I, I would just like to motion to reconsider, so what we put in it on consent to go through, I think the questions that have been asked have been, been answered, and I, I, I don't think they, they weigh enough for us to, to put it on debate, leave it over, leave it waiting a week and lingering over, I think this is something that we need to push through, but that's just my ask.
Not getting held, it's just on debate, I don't understand, we get thrown, we get stuff, Alderman McMiniman puts things on debate all the time that should fly through.
Just for clarification, the, my understanding, the chair's understanding is, the, this chair's understanding is, the, in order for something to go on the consent agenda, it needs to be unanimous consent, is there unanimous consent? You still want it to be debate?
I want it to be.
Okay, motion on the floor is for the debate agenda, there is a second, is there any further discussion, any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, Mr. Clerk.
Twenty twenty-two, four forty-one, an ordinance declaring real property located at 1824 Bryan Lane to be surplus property, directing the sale of said property and authorizing the publication of notice in said sale and request for proposals.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, Mr. Clerk.
Twenty twenty-two, four forty-two, an ordinance accepting quote number eight, one eight, two seven, two five five, and authorizing purchase of Motorola Solutions radio equipment and services from Wireless USA in an amount not to exceed $56,436.93 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Thank you.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, Mr. Clerk.
Twenty twenty-two, four forty-three, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $20,000 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, four forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a five-year agreement with Visions LLC to provide wellness programs and resources for a total amount not to exceed $105,000 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Thank you.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, four forty-five, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of the 2022 Burn Justice Assistant Grant, number 15PBJA-22-GG-02260-JAGX, from the US Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, in the amount of $95,441, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of the grant funds for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-two, four forty-six, an ordinance authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement with the City of Springfield Office of Public Utilities to upgrade the water infrastructure to support fire suppression for the entire block of 300 East Adams Street, utilizing central area tax increment finance funds to the Office of Planning and Economic Development for an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Move for consent.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda, is there any discussion at all?
Alderman Gregory.
I do have some discussion, and, and I'm okay with it being on consent, but I just would like to understand, I know in, in our economic development, it sort of goes along with the question that our woman Conley asked about the last project, so the application name on, on this is, is the name of, I would assume, the owner, and, and not the city to, to get these TIF funds, but it, it appears that this is a, this would be city property, so to speak, so is this the same, same type of instance, sir?
This would be an example where we would, the city would basically reimburse, using TIF funds, the Office of Public Utilities for the installation of the water main, which would be a public, pub, you know, we, we own the water main, and it's limited or intended to provide for fire protection service for that block.
Okay.
But it would be, would be to pay or reimburse the public utility for the work done to do that work.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, any unfinished business that come before the committee of the whole this evening? Okay, hearing none, any new business come before the city committee, yes, Mayor?
Yeah, just one announcement, Oak Ridge Cemetery Foundation's having a tree tour on Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, and then also, Horseshoes, the baseball team's having a Chutoba Fest, I think it's from 11:00 to 4:00 on Saturday as well.
They're having a what?
Chutoba Fest, so.
Oh, I thought you said.
Horseshoe sandwich, beverages out at the ballpark.
Any further new business, Alderman Gregory?
Yes, I, I just wanna mention that we do have a new Seventh Street Ciderie, some of you may like it, it's on Seventh Street, and, and I'm really saying this because, you know, southeast downtown, we're trying to really put some focus on the good things that's going on, on over on the southeast side of downtown, so Seventh Street Council Facility Group is opening a new ciderie, 1014 will be the ribbon cutting, and they officially started at 11:00, so stop in early, get you a little something to drink and support, see you soon.
Thank you. Any further new business? Seeing none, any clerk, Mr. Clerk, did any citizen request to address the committee this evening?
Yes, Charlotte Johnson.
All right, Charlotte Johnson, Charlotte Johnson, Charlotte Johnson, I don't believe she's here, anyone else?
James Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, he's here. Where's your Patriots hat?
Uh huh, getting to the top 25, and we would change gear.
Hey, we, we won.
I know.
Cowboy fan, be quiet.
Mr. Johnson's floor door.
Let me be quick, cuz, two weeks ago, y'all was out of here about 6 o'clock, and I missed my appointment, and I understand now, tonight I gotta be here till almost 7:00, so, this gonna be part two of my conversation, and I'm gonna make it quick, and try to get to my points, Springfield resident lifelong, and you can put this on the debate agenda too, we are in some strange times, we are in a fight, women are in a fight, and this is October, and I support the women, I have my pink, I see a few men that sit in this building who have their pink on, we support, so, this is about the women, and you guys know where I'm going, anybody know the story, the Bible story of David and Goliath? Well, I, I had a week to chew on, and I appreciate the conversation and the feedback from the Horseshoe on last week, and I wanna respond to some things of conversations with the fire chief on the telephone, that's fine and dandy, but if stuff is said up here, I don't have to come up and ask questions, or even wonder what's really going on, and if we're gonna be transparent, some of those conversations need to be said up here, cuz I really would like to know what the fire chief is thinking and what he's doing, because until last week, until the mayor said that there's gonna be a hiring in January, I don't think I knew about that, and I'm pretty sure most of the community didn't, and I had some responses from some people, and of course, Alderman McMiniman sent me some stuff, you know, and, but that's funny that if the fire department has a recruiting team or something, nobody even knows about it, the event that he sent me back however many years ago, nobody even knew about, I didn't know about it, so, to answer some questions, women have applied for the fire department, and what we need to do, Mayor, is find out what happened to those women, where they are, and I'm listening to some comments, you know, radio and public, and I believe women can do the job as just as much as a man can, and I'm gonna repeat that, because some people send, think they don't really, they don't care about who comes running in a building to save them, but the truth of the matter is, I might leave a question out here, how many women do we actually have on our fire department, because I, I really don't even know the number, and human resources, and Mayor, we'll get to that too, but I don't know that number, I don't even know if Springfield ever even had any colored women on the department, if somebody has that answer, they can share it, now, in the past, I've been here for quite a while doing this, I was back when, God rest his soul, Larry was HR director, one of the best, best HR directors ever, because the, I don't even know who our HR people are now, which, sad to me, but, you know, let, let me explain the reasons why we don't have what we should have on our department, it's the systematic issues that have been in place for a long time, it's the powers that be, and until the powers that be change their thoughts, and change, or wanna see change, we're gonna continue to have these issues, now this Horseshoe, I heard, I think it was Alice said, we got like, this Horseshoe is diverse, very diverse, women, blacks, take a picture, because that's history-making for this Horseshoe, I remember when there was only one.
Who was that?
Mr. McNeil, that's how far I can remember back, so, until we, Mayor, the powers that be start wanting to make the change, we're gonna continue to have the same problems, now, I'm gonna put some fire under your feet, in the powers that be feet, no pun intended, but we gotta start making a change, we gotta get people, and if they don't know how to, ask the police department, cuz we ran into the same thing with them, but the leader wanted to make a change, and we got change, we're not where we probably should be, but we're not where we used to be, so the fire department needs that same kind of fire to them, and if he needs some help, have him ask the union leaders, cuz they had made the change, there's women, well, let me, let me back that up, ask 477 or 965 on how you make the change, if he needs help, we're getting some diversity, cuz I believe he needs some help, so, you got a class in January, I like to see a minimum of two colored people, and the other half, women, Mayor, if you push it, it will move, Horseshoe, if you push it, it will move, and I'm gonna keep pushing until it moves, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Alderman Gregory.
Just real quickly, thank you, James, for coming, just a few things, it cringes my soul to hear you say color, just say black, white, brown, whatever, you know what I'm saying, we could just be real, we black people, it is what it is, don't be ashamed to say it when you come up here, and I know you're not, but the color thing, I'm getting texts from our elders, and they like going nuts, but I will say, you know, this, 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 this push for minorities, women's and stuff, in, in every aspect, in every nook and cranny of society is, is a, is a constant thing, it's a constant thing that I know I'll fight for every day, I know Roy Williams fights for, and many of our council members, you know, we miss, we may disagree on some things, I've had some conversations with Chief, and, and we've had some conversations out here, you know, but, but as aldermen and alder, alderpeople, particularly my experience is, is, is that, you know, these is tough topics, bro, and, and we attack them, and we go after them, just like with your unions, 477, 916, and every, every last one of them, we tip our hat to you for the improvements that you made, but we still can get better, even y'all, so, everybody gotta get better, that's, that's just the society in every, in every nook and cranny of it, bro, we get you, we on it, I just had a conversation, uh, uh, with Chief Blough, and, and, you know, I, I'm sort of with Roy on this, we gotta give them a chance to start getting it, I agree with you, we wanna see some, some people, some black people, some women, and, and every other race in, in this next class, but we gotta work towards getting it, all right?
All right, thank you for those comments quickly, yes?
So, I agree with you, let me back up, what I didn't say, this problem hasn't just happened, see, like 12 months ago, if you drive around this city and you watch who's on these fire trucks and rigs, unless you have your blinders on, you can see it, now, how come this has never came up before, I brought it up, only you can answer that question, but I drive around this city just like you do, and this hasn't been something new just before the pandemic, this has been this way for some years before the pandemic, and now after, and now it's gonna be even harder after, because, yeah, you're right, the pandemic has, there's a group of our society that's got spoiled and don't wanna work, and that, yeah, I agree, that's to, that's everywhere, but I'm talking about the ones who wanna work, who's willing to, and they just need an opportunity, because, like the police department, we couldn't get minorities either, but when we started getting some, more came, more took the test, and that's the problem with the fire department, until they see some, they won't go and apply, so, we have to start somewhere and then move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Fair enough.
Mayor?
Yeah, as was pointed out, this is a decades-old problem, it's not anything new with regards to that, and Chief Blough came into a difficult situation, that he's willing to accept that challenge, and, so we appreciate him for that, I think he's been at it maybe two years, if that, and, yeah, not quite, but the list was, the test had already been done, it was already, the wheels in motion, so he's working with that, the next testing period will be in January, but again, he's gonna give a presentation next week, I believe, that'll cover, you know, his plans with regards to recruitment, outreach, things of that nature, but it's a work in progress, but that's what the emphasis has been from the top down, since this administration came, and you can look at the numbers, actually, Ron Cook, he'll introduce himself, he's the HR person, he was out last week, but he has the diversity numbers which have improved since 2015, and we continue to do that, so, you know, it's a work in progress, and will, always should be a challenge with all the departments, and hopefully we get inching along, closer and closer to the numbers that we all want to see, where it's a balance within the city, but it's always going to be an effort, you can never turn it off, it's every effort, it doesn't matter who's in any of these seats, it's gonna be an ongoing effort to remain diversified in the community, cuz population shift, and so that's what we wanna be cognizant of and move in that direction. direction.
Thank you, mayor, Mr. Clerk, any additional citizens' requests to address the committee this evening?
None have signed up.
None have signed up, okay, is there a need for executive session, Mr. Corporation Counsel?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, no executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?